Thank you a little bit.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for joining us this morning for Spokane City Council's study session.
I think you're muted, Brian.
I shouldn't be muted. So do I do this? Oh, I'm not using the mic anymore? Okay. All right. Yes, I was muted. We have a new technology that lets me unmute myself. So that's great. Anyway, welcome, everyone, to Spokane City Council's study session today. We're going to have a quick interview with Luke Jasmine in a moment. We're going to hear from Family Promise, and we're going to get some, hopefully, real-time COVID-19 updates as well. We were going to talk about Cannon Street Shelter, but the mayor has requested that we delay that for a few days. So let's, I want to tee up Luke. Luke Jasmine, thanks for joining us. Luke has been nominated by council members Burke and Cathcart to be the District One member to the Ombudsman Commission. And unlike most appointments where the mayor appoints and council confirms, this is a position that council members appoint from their district. And we're getting close to the next meeting, and the person that was filling this position moved out of the city. So we had an opening, and council members Burke and Cathcart have recommended Luke. And Luke, what we do is we just interview people briefly before we vote on them on Monday. And you appeared before us a few times, but if you could just, again, introduce yourself, a little bit of your background and why you're interested in this position, and then members may or may not have questions for you. So go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Luke Jasmine III. I am actually in the early learning field, and that's where most of you know me from. And I've been living in Spokane for, I would say, over about 13 years now, from Boston, Massachusetts. I am, the reason, when this position opening came up to my attention...
I forget what his name was.
The reason I was interested is because I deal with my community in a very real way every single day, whether it's through the early learning, opening childcare, or it's advocacy statewide, or it's just with my neighbors. And for me, as I'm 6'7", 300 pounds, black male here in Spokane, so there's definitely been instances here with law enforcement that, in my opinion, need to be addressed. And I'm glad to just be able to be part of how we continue to make sure that people of color specifically here in Spokane have voice, have a chance to really be able to bring things up that really break trust, and, I don't know, figure out ways that we can move forward together. So I think my strong business background, communications, and everything really fit in well.
All right. Thank you so much, Luke, for that perspective. Council members, does anyone have any questions for Luke at this time? Councilmember Burke?
Well, I don't really have any questions, but I just, you know, I think this is going to bring a really great, unique perspective to our ombudsman. I'm right, someone with real lived experience, who's also lived in other parts of the, you know, the country. And I think that that kind of experience is really important right now. I'm just really excited that you want to serve on this. And, you know, I think you also have such a unique background with your childcare background and your business owner background to kind of like see all those intersections of how our communities working together or not working together. And so, yeah, I'm really excited about this, and it's really cool to see that you want to serve your community in another capacity, because I know you're busy, but thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other council member questions? I feel, even though I know you've only been in Spokane for 13 years, I feel compelled to ask you, where did you go to high school? Because we ask everyone that, so.
Yeah, my high school was Toman E. High School. But I think here, my favorite high school has to be Rogers at the particular moment, so.
All right.
Go Rogers.
Nice. I used to work at Rogers back in the 80s, and they've got grit at Rogers. That's what I appreciate at Rogers. That's awesome. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any other questions, so thanks for making time on short notice for us. We'll be voting Monday afternoon. It's nothing you have to appear for. This is your appearance. We'll let you know. And I think your first meeting is going to be on November 17th, so put that on your calendar and be in touch with the OPO. Thanks so much for your willingness to dive into this and your continued service. Take care. We'll see you.
Thank you. And really quick, I want to say thank you, everybody on this council, for everything that you've been doing during this pandemic. You all have been staying strong. You've been doing a lot for the community. I know you probably don't get a lot of things, so thank you. Wanted to say that before signing off.
Great. Thanks. All right. So next, I'm going to invite Joe. Go ahead and introduce yourself, Joe, and tell us what's going on at Family Promise. I know we were scheduled before you were in the news a little bit this week, so we're looking both for, you know, the immediate challenge, but also just what's going on and what support we need to provide the shelter organizations and the unhoused community, and just whatever you want to share. You've got up to 30 minutes to talk with us about whatever you think would be helpful for us. So thanks for showing up.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you, council, for having me. I'm also glad to see Kylie and Mark on here. And we'll update you on some of the things that have been happening, particularly in the past week, at Family Promise as part of what I'll present today. If you have any questions, just jump in and interrupt me. That's the way I prefer to do it. You don't have to wait for me to finish talking. Sometimes if you wait, you'll wait forever with that. You know, you guys know how that goes, being in politics. So I'm going to share my screen with you, and we'll see if we can get this presentation up here. All right. Let me know if y'all can see that. Good. Okay. So Family Promise of Spokane, we've been in Spokane for 23 years, since 1997, working exclusively with families experiencing homelessness. When most people think of homelessness, and most of your constituents too, when they think of homelessness, they're not thinking of families. They're not thinking of kids. They're not thinking of families together, single moms. What they usually are thinking of is singles on the street downtown. Usually, single men is what comes to their mind on the streets downtown. But what they're not thinking of is this. So these are all children that have been through Family Promise in the past year and now are in housing of their own, and you guys help support this. This is part of the grant that you provide to Family Promise through the Open Door Shelter. So all of these children have been through that shelter in the past year. Family homelessness, children homelessness is a big deal. One in every 25 students in Spokane County last year were homeless at some point during the year. So this is the McKinney-Vento definition, which is anybody that's unstablely housed. So they may be couch surfing. They may be on the streets. They may be in cars. They may be in motels. But 3,108 kindergarten through 12th grade students last year, when you add their little brothers and parents into that mix, we're probably talking somewhere around 12,000 individuals in Spokane County in a family unit that experienced homelessness over the past year. And a lot of them are really young, so this is a breakdown of the age groups of our residents, of our guests. And the largest single age group that we serve is under one-year-old. Under one-year-old, and then 52% of our guests are under the age of 10. We had just over 500 guests since July, 552 guests since last July come through the shelter, and most of those are little, little kids. So Family Promise, we equip families and communities to end the cycle of homelessness. So our focus is not on running a shelter, although that's part of what we do. Our focus is on ending the cycle of homelessness. So we do that in three different ways. We do that through preventing families from becoming homeless in the first place. We were the first agency to create a rental assistance program in 2016. And we've been doing rental assistance privately funded until this year, since that time. It's way more cost-effective to prevent homelessness than it is to intervene once homelessness has already happened. Last year, we averaged $340 per family to keep a family housed and prevent them from being evicted. So with $15,000, we kept 209 people housed last year with that basic program. On the provision side, this is our two shelter models. So we have a rotational shelter, which houses families in local churches at night, which has been put on pause because of COVID. And then we have the emergency walk-in shelter, the open-door shelter, which is the one that you guys are most familiar with, which houses anybody that becomes homeless in a family unit in Spokane County. The day they become homeless, they can walk into open doors and receive services. And then on the preparation side, this is our ability to prepare families for a stable life after leaving homelessness. So the case management to get them into housing, but also we follow our families for up to two years after they leave the shelter to stabilize them in their new community and in their housing. We have a 94% retention rate, housing retention rate, for our families. So we only see 6% come back into the homeless system after they have exited from one of our shelters. We move more people into permanent housing than any other shelter in Spokane County. In fact, we've moved more than double the amount, this is since last June. We've moved more than double the amount of guests into permanent housing. So we're really proud of that. That's a big focus of ours, is not just a bed for the night, but how do we make it permanent forever for these families? So our COVID preparation and response. We were one of the first agencies to identify the potential of a COVID situation. This is an email that I sent back in December of 2019, so three months before COVID even got here, asking for help to prepare a plan for us to respond to COVID in our shelters. Unfortunately, that was not heated very well until March, when we really got it here. But since that time, it's been really, the Health Department has been great to work with. Mark and Kylie have been fantastic, well, all of them, including Dr. Lutz. Everybody's been fantastic to work with, and particularly in the past week, and I'll get there right now, is how much they have engaged with us. So but in March, we were the first agency to enact a COVID response plan. On March 13th, we paused our Bridges rotational shelter, which houses families in churches, because of the risk to the volunteers at the churches, as well as the risk to our families. We paused all in-shelter volunteers at that point, and we are a heavy volunteer organization, so this was a significant change for us. We created our own isolation spots. We got campers and trailers into our parking lot and created our own isolation facilities for anybody that was experiencing any symptoms of illness. We also opened up two apartments that we quarantine families in, in partnership with Naomi. And then we implemented the regular social distancing, masks, enhanced sanitation procedures, daily temperature checks, and then required all nonessential staff to work from home. We've been doing that since March 13th. But we also opened, this was our way of social distancing from the open-door shelters. We opened a second 24/7 family shelter out of our Hartson location, which was the day center for our rotational program. And this is for families that have a family member with a compromised immune system, and that shelter has a capacity of 15 people. And so we've been operating two 24/7 shelters since March, and that has gone really well until last Thursday. So last Thursday, we had our first COVID-positive guest. They called us from the doctor's office, they're actually at the doctor's office at the time. We immediately isolated them into one of our quarantine apartments, contacted the Health Department, and then through contact tracing, isolated two more families and tested those families and three of our staff that were the closest with the guests that became positive. From that, two positive guests were identified, and one of our staff members was identified as positive. So on Friday of last week, the Health Department, which has tested everybody in the shelter and all of our staff, by Sunday, there were 17 positives, ranging in ages from 1 to 32 in the shelter. We moved one family that was completely negative out of the shelter and then quarantined the entire open-door shelter, and it's been on quarantine this week. We just received another couple of tests back as positive today. So we're now at 21 positives in the shelter, still only two staff, but the rest are guests that are positive. So 22 out of, just under, just around 49 right now. On Monday, we did alert the community and community partners and the media of our situation. As of today, all staff and guests that tested negative the first time have been retested to see if we're continuing to spread in the past week, or if it has been, begun to start to be contained. And then based on these results, we'll work with the Health Department on what a phased reopening might look like. Since March, we spent $183,463 on COVID preparation. We're estimating spending about $54,000, almost $55,000 in the next two months, dealing with this response, the cleanup from it, as well as new equipment to help prevent this from happening again. So altogether, $238,400 has been, or will be spent by the end of the year on our COVID response. We have just made a request to the county, or revised request to the county, for that amount, for the CARES Act funding. Questions on all of that that I've covered so far?
No?
Hey, Joe, this is Councilmember Cathcart. I've got a couple of questions for you.
Absolutely.
Of the 21 that are COVID-positive, are any of them being hospitalized, or are they all just in quarantine?
They're all in quarantine right now. We have only had two that have experienced more severe symptoms. Most of them are asymptomatic or minor symptoms. We did have one that went to be hospitalized. It was a single mom hospitalized on, what day is it? Thursday. On Tuesday night, but she returned to the shelter on Wednesday morning, against doctor's orders, apparently, but she's a single mom, and the hospitals won't take the children at this point. So we had an unaccompanied youth in the shelter overnight. But she seems to be doing much better. I saw her this morning, and she seems to be doing much better. So and then we had one other with more severe symptoms, but those that we could handle in the shelter.
I see.
But for the most part, it's been minor symptoms.
Okay. So that's good to know. And then I'm just curious, as you have families that come in, are you guys kind of surveying them to get a sense of the reason for their homelessness? And if so, I'm just kind of curious what maybe the predominant reasons are that you're hearing.
Sure. I mean, there's a variety of reasons. There's one common denominator in all of homelessness, and that common denominator is some type of loss of community. So whether it was a, you know, fight that you had with your family, or the friends that you were staying with, you know, that situation didn't work out, or domestic violence situation, there's some type of loss of community. And so, and then there's nobody else you can lean on. So that's the predominant thing that we see. The second most common factor, and this is with almost every guest, is there's some type of childhood trauma that was experienced when the adults were children. And often, they experience homelessness as children and are now re-experiencing it as adults with their own children.
Interesting. And then my last question is, you mentioned that you're estimating that we could have as many as 12,000 folks who are experiencing homelessness in Spokane. I'm kind of curious, your data source, but maybe if that is the case, I'm wondering why or how we're missing such a large number of those folks when we do the point-in-time count and that sort of stuff.
Sure. So that number was actually from last year. That was before COVID. And that number was extrapolated by, based on our average guest size at our shelter, our average family size, multiplied by the number of homeless students identified by school districts in Spokane County. And so that's how we get up to that number. Actually, though, that may be a little bit low, honestly, because about half of the families that do come into the shelter have not identified to the schools that their children are experiencing homelessness. So we may be, you know, potentially double of that last year.
Do you?
Yeah.
Well, just my last question for you is just kind of curious if you have any thoughts, based on your experience, of how we could do a better job of identifying those individuals or families?
Yeah, I think expanding beyond the point-in-time count or the HUD definition of homelessness. So the HUD definition of homelessness is you've got to be on the street at that moment. In families, often, I mean, it's not safe to have your kids on the streets. It's not safe to have them downtown. That's why they don't get counted. They're called the hidden homeless for that reason, because they're sleeping in cars, they're, you know, staying at Denny's all night long, or things like that. So expanding that definition to anybody that's unstablely housed or non-permanent housing would broaden that definition to where you would see, be able to use school district data on really counting what the real issue is.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I just wanted to, because, Joe, you did a really good job explaining. Also, just something to remember that the point-in-time count is just a point in one time. And that, you know, during wintertime, folks will find ways to get inside. And so there's probably likely even more people who are experiencing homelessness on the street but have somehow found a way to have money to be inside a hotel or something like that, or found a place where they're not going to be found. And so it's just not a very reliable source of data. But the school district is a little bit more reliable, and so I like that you went off that, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, the school district data is more reliable than the point-in-time. Also, the good point, Councilwoman Berg, is point-in-time count is held the fourth week of January every year. So, I mean, it's always freezing cold here at that time, and so our numbers get kind of miscalculated because of that.
And?
Any other questions on that so far, friends?
I just wanted to follow up, because you said this right at the top on the school district numbers. Those are including people who aren't literally out of shelter, but includes any unstable sheltering. So they might be couch surfing, living with someone. So that's why those numbers are bigger. The point-in-time is literally looking for people who are either in a shelter or literally outside, so much narrower number.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. And it's just for that one day. So last year was January 24th. I don't know what the date will be this year. It's the fourth week of January, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. So what I originally wanted to present to you guys about was what we were looking at doing moving forward. And I'll tie these two concepts together, COVID response and what this looks like moving forward for us. So 40% of those making less than $40,000 a year lost their jobs in March nationwide. And in Spokane County, two of our top five major industries, the average income is less than $40,000 a year in both retail and food services. A number of those jobs will never come back again. And then the ones that have come back are limited. And so what we've seen is often these jobs are held by, you know, young families, young adults. And so it's the single mom who's working the night shift at Chili's that is impacted. But because of school not going into session, we have a lot of parents, single parents, that are making the choice rather, you know, do I go to work or do I stay home with my kids? And it's an impossible choice, and they're having to make it. So what we've seen in the open-door shelter since March is a major shift in the demographics that we serve. So prior to COVID, we were 70% two-parent households, so a mother and some type of father figure. Currently, we are 80% single-parent households in the shelter. So we've had a major shift to single-parent focus in the open-door shelter since the beginning of March. And that includes both single moms and single fathers. In 2016 is when we opened up the emergency shelter for homeless families, and evictions were 1 in 40 that year. In November, right now, we are 1 in 5 Spokane renters is late on their rent payments, according to Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium. So when the moratoriums run out, that eviction crisis will come. Even with a lot of the stimulus money being put into rental assistance so far, we're still kind of holding steady at that 20% of renters late on their rent payments. still kind of holding steady at that twenty percent of renters late on their rent payments. So that's a concern that we have, particularly on the family side. The other part of that is we are beginning to see that the COVID babies will be coming. So the quarantine babies will be starting in December and will be being born December, January, February, March. A lot of, it's, and it's, it's very different based on economics. So middle income in wealthy families tend, are tending to have, have less babies because of COVID, and our poverty families are increased in pregnancies. And so we're expecting this eviction crisis and a baby boom basically in the middle of this winter. And so we are trying to accommodate for that. One of the risks that we have is that the babies coming back into our shelter have, don't have developed immune systems to, I mean, anything, let alone COVID, but any illness, and they aren't fully immunized until four months old. And so, but right now, we are the best option. We're the best worst option for babies, and so we're actively trying to create a shelter for families with infants by the end of this year, specifically for them. And then we're actively trying to increase our capacity to where we'll be able to serve a thousand families a year by 2024. We served three hundred and eighty-six families last year. So it's a pretty significant jump to where we want to go. But we have a plan for doing this, and, and this is what our expansion plan looks like. And it's very different than what you guys may have seen before from some of the other shelters. So we have our, currently, we have three sites, these three locations. Our 2020 East Mission Avenue, or 2002 East Mission Avenue, is the open door shelter. It's also where our administrative offices and our HUD will be. But we're going to turn it into more of a triage site to where families, that's where they enter the door the first time, and they're there for a couple of weeks, maybe a month, as we assess what would be the best fit for them. But then as quickly as possible, we would like to move them to these smaller site shelters. So we have one on Hartson Avenue right now that's, can house up to five families. The reason for this is we see better outcomes here. So since, since March, we've been running this Hartson House, and ninety-five percent of the guests that have stayed there have exited to permanent housing since that time. Out of the open door shelter, we have great results, but it's about forty percent that exit to permanent housing from the mass shelter. And then we just purchased a house next to our other location for another site, and that should open in November. And that'll just be an overflow from our mission location. It'll house up to nine people. Then early next year, we'd like to open up two other sites. These are smaller site locations, one for family respite, which we've been working with Providence Multi Care and Primera on preparing for that one. And the second one is this infant shelter. We've been looking at a location with Spokane Valley Partners in the Valley for that one, and we'll see where that, where that comes about. And then in the future, what we'd like to do is continue opening these smaller site locations around the county where we see the most guests coming from to our shelters so that we will have neighborhood sites, and then the church rotational shelters will operate out of those smaller sites within that community. So this could be in Spokane Valley, this could be in North Spokane, it could be in Airway Heights, Cheney. So that way, we are really taking a regional approach, an honest regional approach, but also going with what gets the best results for our outcomes. Any questions about this?
Right. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? No.
All right. So here's how we are raising funds to do this. So we look at it in three different ways, today, tomorrow, and forever fundraising. And so we're meeting with private donors, we're meeting with government officials, we're meeting with foundations and talking about this. So this year, we were raising about four hundred thousand over last year's budget. This is mostly to increase our backend staff, our administrative staff, to prepare for the growth that we're going to see ahead. We are on track for that. One of the things, though, with COVID and all the increased expenses is we've, we've had, we have spent this year's Open Doors grant, part of our five-year grant, we've spent this year's expenses already. So we are unfunded for November and December expenses through the open door shelter, and so we are looking for another seventy-three thousand, five hundred to cover November and December expenses for the Open Doors Emergency Family Shelter. For tomorrow funding, we're, this is the expansion, the expansions that we're planning on, looking for about five point seven million, which would include facilities expansion of two point five million and three point two million in program expansion. So this is the added staff and programming over the next three years. One of those projects is completing the lower level of the mission building. So that's the old Casano's Italian Deli and Grocery. What most people don't know is there's sixteen, or six thousand square feet of unused space that's in the basement of that building that was originally a neighborhood strip mall in the nineteen forties, in fifties, but has sat as storage for the last sixty or so years. So we'd like to renovate that, and then that will allow us to increase capacity at the open door shelter by twenty-five beds for, during this COVID time period. And after we get through this time period, that could expand up to about forty-five additional beds, which would limit the need for warming centers for families in the future. And would be a long-term cost savings for, for the community. And then the infant shelter operating costs are about three hundred and nineteen thousand for a year is what we're looking at for that location. And that will house up to an additional twenty-five people a night with infants. And then long-term, we're raising ten million dollars as basically an endowment, and we're looking for an additional, or rental properties as part of that acquisition. All right.
All right.
So what, what questions do you all have for me?
Any questions, comments? Your, your presentation is very clear, so don't take silence as a lack of interest, but any councilmembers? Councilmember Stratton?
When you, I like the idea of expanding out, be a little more regional and looking at maybe different neighborhoods. Is anybody looking at some of the older neighborhoods where we have some nice, maybe not nice is the word, but big old buildings that could be renovated and used for family promise purposes in those neighborhoods?
You know, we are, we are looking at a lot of different areas, including, you know, church facilities that have closed, as well as, as well as small apartment complexes. That one has actually come to the surface, because it's, it's not too much more to purchase a four, four-unit apartment complex than it is buy a house here in Spokane right now. And so we're actually looking at a smaller apartment complexes as, where we would use one of the apartments for a shelter type of location, and then the other three or four as rental that then subsidizes the rest of the program. And I think there's some real potential in some of those moving forward, but no, there are some, you know, some very large properties, particularly in Brown's addition, that have already been broken up into, you know, models like this. But we're actively looking for some county locations. Spokane Valley, sixteen point nine percent of our guests come from Spokane Valley, mostly from Broadway Elementary School. So that's why we're looking at Spokane Valley Partners, because it's right next to Broadway Elementary. And then we're getting guests from Cheney and Airway, Airway Heights as well. So that will be another look out that direction as well.
So if we get any suggestions or have any ideas, we can just send them to you?
Absolutely, absolutely. Send, send any suggestions or ideas or contacts that you think would be really interested in what we're doing here. It's a different model, rather than building bigger and bigger shelters, we are building smaller and smaller shelters because of the greater outcomes they, they, that we get from them. Plus, they're an easier sell for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So our Hartson location, most of the neighbors don't even know that it's, that homeless families are there, because they just see a couple of cars parked and a mom pushing a, you know, stroller to the bus stop. So they, they, they fit easier with the NIMBY situation.
Right, right. Okay, that, that's great. I'll stay in touch.
Great.
Thanks.
Joe, I also wanted to affirm the neighborhood approach, because that way you can have guests there that are actually from that neighborhood. They have resources and connections, and it's so much easier than sending them downtown where they know nobody and it's a little scary. So I really affirm that approach. Appreciate that.
You're, you're absolutely right. And when I talked about community, we're trying to put those where we see the most kids coming from schools, and closer to their schools. And that's part of the staff's focus, is to reconnect within that community, whether that is connecting with the local faith-based groups in that community, or the, you know, AYSO soccer, or whatever it is that could rebuild community around those families. We had one family, just to give you a quick example, and is, we had a family come through two years ago, spent all summer with us, had a baby the day that they, the week after they left the shelter into permanent housing, but during that time that they spent with us, they got connected into one of our local faith communities that was volunteering at the shelter at the time. Fast forward to last November, the dad was diagnosed with a tumor in his brain. And so they've got to go to Seattle for specialist appointments, and who's going to get, who's going to take care of their kids, and how are they going to get there, and how are they going to pay for the hotel? And that faith community wrapped around them and took care of all of that. So even though they are in crisis, their likelihood of becoming homeless again is really low because of that community connection. And so if we're going to solve homelessness, it's not just a housing issue, it's a rebuilding community issue to actually do that.
Right. Great. All right. Well, Joe, thanks so much for spending some time with us and giving us a window into what you see every day. And please convey back to all your employees and your volunteers and your funders and your guests that they are an important part of Spokane, and we appreciate the role that everyone's playing. So, thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Yep. All right. Next, I wanted to turn to get some real-time updates on COVID-19, what's going on. And I'd asked some city department heads to come, which we have some, but we also, I, I see on the screen, we've got on the screen, we've got some folks from the Health District, which is great. And particularly, I thought I'd start off with Kylie Kingsbury, because she focuses on homeless issues and shelters. And so Kylie, I'm wondering if you can just share what's going on with the shelters related to COVID, and what, what more support we need to provide, do you think, to preserve public health and try to reverse these trends? So I'll, I'll leave it to you, whatever you think's most important for city council to hear.
Hi, everybody. Yes, so my name's Kylie Kingsbury, and I'm the Homeless Outreach Coordinator at Spokane Regional Health District. And we have had, I think, a pretty unique approach in Spokane to serve our, our homeless community members. And I think there's a lot of other communities in Washington that are, are working to address that, but I, I think here in Spokane, we have a pretty unique approach, and we are able to work with a lot of partners, which has been great. One thing that I am not sure a lot of you guys know about, we do shelter triage at two main shelters, seven days a week. So we do mission, the shelter on mission, the Salvation Army Way Out, and House of Charity. And pretty soon, we will be adding the Cannon Street Warming Center to our route, but we do screening and testing for COVID at those sites, and that is essentially managed. We have a couple of Health District employees, so it's me, and then another one of our community health workers, and then we have a homeless outreach worker from CHAS who comes out. And the, those, the three of us kind of manage the, the lead role on that, and then the rest is volunteers. And so we have volunteers who'll come out with us seven days a week, who, now, it's pretty cold and dark, and so it's been great to be able to work with them. And from there, we do screening, testing, referrals to isolation or quarantine, and we have currently two isolation facilities that are operating and offering safe space to isolate and quarantine in the community. And a couple of numbers on those that I think is, is interesting, since we've started, our isolation facility at the hotel is, has served two hundred and twenty-five community members. And in the last month, or in the last thirty days, they've served sixty community members. So I think that kind of highlights how things are changing and how things have been increasing recently with the flu season and cold weather coming. And then our second isolation facility has served a hundred and ten people, and sixty-two of those have been in the last thirty days, and so quite a big proportion. We've had a mobile testing program at the Health District that goes to either shelters or sometimes just like on the street, wherever we, we need to meet community members, parking lots, that kind of thing, to offer tests. And since, since March, we've done over five hundred tests, COVID tests, to kind of get a sense of what's going on in the community. And right now, since, I think things have been going pretty well in the shelters, we've had, if I'm getting my math right, it was, we've had forty-one cases who, of community members experiencing homelessness in the shelters. And in the last two weeks, thirty-four of those were reported. And so it's a significant increase just over the last couple of weeks. And I think a good proportion of those Joe shared were at the open door shelter. But I think we've also got a handful of other places that are kind of in the works right now that we're waiting on test results to know. We were just out this morning doing our second round of testing at Open Doors, and yesterday we did another big round. And so quite a lot of testing lately, because we've had increases of positive cases and then exposures, and it can pretty quickly expand when you have congregate settings with a lot of community members. And even people who are symptomatic, and then that can just really explode pretty quickly. We have a lot of other programs and services at the Health District that are trying to help manage that. And one of them is our epidemiology team. There are specific epidemiologists and nurses who are part of a congregate settings team, and so they're kind of like the, the brains of our, our congregate slash shelter, shelter approach to COVID. And it's daily meetings and kind of using their expertise to respond to situations as they're developing, to make best recommendations and kind of make plans for what to do next and how to protect the, as many people as possible in the community to, to really keep COVID cases low. Our huge, our biggest priority- low. Our biggest priority is to try to keep our shelters safe and to avoid massive outbreaks. And so we're working pretty hard to do that. Part of that is with partnering with other organizations and healthcare providers. So a huge partnership has been Providence. They offer, they give our congregate settings slash homeless shelter teams five free tests every day that we're able to use. And we prioritize those free tests for community members experiencing homelessness who don't have access to going and getting tested themselves at primary care providers or clinics. And another huge partner has been CHAZ. And so they have been instrumental in helping us test at shelters where, like Joe was saying, at open doors, we tested all staff and all residents, partly to get like a surveillance so we can get an idea of like what's actually going on, how many people are positive. And so they've been amazing in helping with that. Also, we, the community partners who offer homeless services, shelter providers have been really great to work with. We've been partnering with them since March and offering walkthroughs to kind of give recommendations on how they can best set up their facilities and offer services to protect their clients and staff. And so we've been able to do a lot of that. Mark, he is still on here, he's been instrumental with that. He is our expert at the Health District. And he's gone above and beyond to help with that. And then another shout out for CMIS has been really helpful in kind of communicating community members who are either exposed, symptomatic, or positive, and kind of giving us a tool to use to share with providers pretty quickly, who, community members that need a little bit of extra support, or maybe some guidance on, or direction on getting tested, or getting access to our isolation facilities. So I think that's kind of like a little bit of like a broader overview of the things that we're doing. But I think over the last couple of weeks, it's become a little bit more clear. We've been preparing for flu season and the cold at the Health District, and how that's going to impact shelter services and our existing work to test and screen and isolate people who are symptomatic or positive with COVID. And I think it is, this is the beginning of a really rough flu season and COVID season in the shelters. And I think these increase in cases over the last couple of weeks will just continue. And I think we, at the Health District, we really try to come up with creative solutions to things. We often say that there's a lot of bad options, but we work hard to weigh them and to pick the best of the bad options. And so I think we are really looking to come up with solutions that may not be the best, but they're the best that we can come up with and that we can feasibly do immediately. And so I think some problems that we're foreseeing is that in the bigger shelters, if we have a couple of positive community members, and we have shelters with over 100 people, I think that's what our biggest worry is. And I liked when Joe was saying that he, they were hoping to do some smaller shelters, and because they had a lot of positive outcomes with getting community members into permanent housing, that's also a great way to help prevent the spread of any sort of outbreak within those communities. It's just smaller shelters. And so I think we, one of our asks that we're trying to work with shelters to do is potentially having new ways of partnering with each other. If we have shelters who have similarly a ton of positive cases, like open doors, we'll have to come up with some creative problem solving to address that. And I think our isolation facilities don't have capacity to take that many more community members. And so we'll have to come up with some creative ways to isolate and quarantine so we don't have to do rolling quarantines in those settings. And I think, Mark, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Mark knows everything.
Yeah, I invite you, Mark, because I get to hear from you every week. You tell a group of us a lot of informative things, but you've got most of City Council. So if there's any data, or information, or trends that you think would be most impactful for City Council members, we'd love to hear it.
You know, just maybe a couple of things. I mean, Kylie alluded to kind of the, you know, the concerns about the up jump of cases. You know, through most of the summer and the fall, we've had some onesies, twosies, and now we're starting to see it come into the community. We're going to, as, and not just, you know, the homeless community, but, you know, Spokane in general, I mean, we're going to see increased case counts over the next, you know, four to six weeks fairly easily with, you know, Thanksgiving holiday, with Christmas, and, you know, with just the amount of community transmission we're seeing. So this is why we're anticipating having problems in other shelters in the community. Right now, it seems to be hitting a lot of the family shelters or women's shelters. But we're trying to kind of anticipate what we're going to see in the future. One of the challenges that we have with shelters, just because of, you know, the spacing requirements and the issues of getting more people in with the colder weather, is, you know, that we don't have very many options to isolate people in a traditional shelter, you know. And that's one of the recommendations we always try to make, is to have a space, you know, if you have someone who's ill, that you can bring them to that area so that, you know, that they can reduce the risk of exposing other people while they're waiting for evaluation or for movement to an isolation facility. So that's going to be a little challenging. I'm really hoping to hear what comes up with Cannon and how that will be utilized, and some of the other options that the city has planned for the winter. If we're looking at our isolation capacity, as Kylie said, we have two shelters. You know, right now, the hotel we have in the valley, we have 22 people there. And, you know, at Amatta Heart, we have, I think, about 28. So we do have some capacity. And once we get to, you know, I'm going to apologize for my dogs there. So once we get to that point where we're going to be getting these test results from these other shelters that we've done some testing this week, our second round with open doors, and, you know, with Rising Strong and Anna Ogden, then we're going to be able to hopefully be able to shift some of those people who are positive to our isolation facilities, if that will allow us to keep that shelter open. If we have a large number of people, especially with the family shelters, it may be useful to just isolate those people in place, just because of the challenges in terms of working with kids in a shelter setting. So those are just some quick observations, but I'm open to any questions, you know, from City Council.
Yeah. Any questions from City Council for Kylie or Mark from the Health District? Councilmember Stratton?
I'm sorry if you said this and I didn't hear it. What about flu shots? Are you out and about doing flu shots in these different areas?
We are. WSU, we've been able to partner with the WSU Schools of Nursing. We actually, we had a handful of them scheduled last week that had to be postponed because of issues with our standing orders at the Health District. And so those are all being worked on by our immunization program. And so I'm hoping that can be worked out with our new health officer and moving that forward. Yeah, that was a bummer that we had those scheduled, and all the volunteers are ready to come and do it. It's been great because we've had a lot more, I used to be in the immunization program at the Health District, and selling flu shots to community members experiencing homelessness is often quite difficult. And I think this year, we've had a lot of interest. And so I'm really hoping we can get that going soon again.
Thank you so much for doing that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Kylie or Mark? All right. Thank you both for spending some time with us. Really appreciate it and appreciate the work that you've been doing. You get super high marks from me and from lots of other people. So, thanks. I was hoping we could hear from Chief, Fire Chief Schaefer. This topic for this study session came up out of our regular meeting, just him telling me some concerns and things that were going on. And I said, boy, we need, all of Council needs to do that. So Brian, I'll just turn it over to you of anything you want to share with Council. You're on mute currently. There you go.
How could you tell, Brian? Can you see my mouth moving? That was pretty impressive. So we just wanted to share kind of the community outlook with prehospital medicine. And after meeting with hospital systems, both Mike and myself, over the past couple of days, we are seeing increases in ICU utilization, the critical care beds that are in the community. And those resources are starting to really be, I would say, decreased. And I'm trying to get to a good spot. Here's, when we look at the capability in the community, and I hope Mark is still on here, he could talk to this, we have a finite amount of resources to move patients that are critical. Interestingly, there's only 10% of the critical care beds that are occupied with COVID patients. What we're seeing across what Mike does with our stroke and cardiac systems and responses and our analysis, is we're seeing people stay home. They're not utilizing 911 as frequently. And when they do, they will lean towards not being transported to the hospital because of concerns anecdotally of the COVID pandemic being more prevalent in a hospital, or the perception of it being more prevalent in the hospital or in the ambulance. So we're seeing people stay home longer, getting worse, and subsequently leading to more critical care utilization in the system. Spokane County, the Tri-Cities, that's Benton and Franklin Counties, ours are some of the highest utilization on the east side of the mountains at 71%. Discussions so far with the hospital systems is COVID, just like the fire department here, we're having issues with staffing. So COVID, when we have people in our organization, right now, it looks like we're live, 24 of our members from the organization are out of the, out of their primary roles, whether they're a first responder or a support person, looks actually like there's 23 that are directly involved in patient care that are quarantined with COVID at home right now, which is a total of 8.24% of our workforce. And that resonates with our healthcare partners as well, primarily due to the exposure, whether at work or at home, family member or otherwise, to COVID and the requirement for 14-day isolation and quarantine and subsequent testing before they can come back to work. So those are the numbers from a healthcare coalition perspective in the community. And kind of, you can get the sense for what we're dealing with in the healthcare world and the prehospital healthcare world. And what we're likely to see moving forward is that grow in terms of CCU bed utilization. As of yesterday, the state has activated their, what's it called, Mike?
Their disaster medical control, so patient distribution, basically. There is a central point located at Harborview, which coordinates patient placement throughout the state because of the stresses that are being felt throughout Washington State. They are distributing patients in a way that equitably distributes patients to try to avoid overwhelming a specific critical care hospital.
And many, you can see in eastern Washington, some of our counties are not very, or don't seem to be very impacted, but their ability to, like our number of beds in Spokane County with the hospital systems that we have here compared to Lincoln County are significantly different. And, you know, one or two patients can turn them over quite quickly. So you have to take the numbers in perspective as well when you start looking at moving patients. That's what Harborview does really well. They're able to see the big picture on watch track and then distribute patients based on criticality and availability of resources. But this is a good, I think this is a good conversation, just for that situational awareness that the city of Spokane is a regional player in this system. We're a small player in the big picture, but nonetheless, we are paying very close attention. And if we see any concerning numbers or any statistics, we'll certainly be the first ones to share that, probably through the Health District.
Great. Any questions for Chief or Mike on that? Yeah, all right. Thanks so much. And Marlene, I don't, originally, I was hoping you might be able to talk to us a little bit about Project Homecoming and how things are going at the city. But I didn't, I'm not sure if you're really prepared to do that. But if you are prepared, go ahead and share with us. But if not, that's fine, too.
Yeah, you know, I think that the homecoming piece is really on hold. I mean, the essential workers, obviously in public safety and in our utilities, continue to come to work every day. And under the protocols they've established for, sorry, my husband's talking behind me, the protocols they've established for making sure that their health places stay as healthy as possible. We've been very fortunate in the public works area that we've had some incidents of COVID, but not a spread within the workplace. So they've gotten the illness potentially outside of the workplace, but they did not spread it to their coworkers, which has been very fortunate for us. And I think that our HR policies are helping with that. We do have telehealth services available for our employees. We have, their COVID testing and COVID treatments are covered in full by our employee medical plan. And they have access to flexible scheduling as much as possible to accommodate, you know, changes in schooling and the things that have happened with the pandemic. And we offer that emergency leave if they do get sick or do need to be quarantined because of being a close contact to someone who has illness. So I think those things are really helping keep illness out of our organization, because we have allowed our employees to have the flexibility to take the time that they need to keep illness out of the workplace and out of, but still get paid, right? So that's our main thing. Plus, we really have implemented elements in the workplace to make sure that we are staying up with the current guidance. So things like making sure sanitizer is available. We are staggering shift starts so that not everybody comes at the same time. Solid waste employees are going directly to their cars and getting their assignments online as opposed to congregating for daily assignments. So those kinds of things are keeping people physically distant, but still allowing them to do the important to do the important work of picking up the trash every day, making sure the water reaches you and that the wastewater gets taken away. So those essential services will continue regardless of how things are happening. Streets have been looking at, for example, how do we make sure that snow happens if we do have several people out because of COVID? So, and we're relying on our other teams in wastewater and water to help us if those kinds of situations arise. So it's really about collaboration and making sure that we understand what's happening in our employee base.
Any questions for Marlene? Any comments? All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for that update. And we don't have any further business today, I don't believe. So I'll gavel us out and see folks Monday afternoon at 1:15. We're adjourned. Stay safe and healthy.